Good evening. I'd like to call the regular, I guess the not regular schedule. We're up a week early this month for the holidays of December 19th, 2024, of the Maumell Planning Commission to order. So we're using a new software for the assistance of meeting minute development, the world of AI, if you will. So as such, it works off of voice recognition. So what I will do is I will call role. That's what Scott, is that what the directors asked me to do? We'll just call role and just enter into your mic and say, present. Then hopefully that will work. If not, we'll have an adjustment the next time. So I am Craig Johnson, Chair, then I'm present. Commissioner Mary Winnick?
Mary Winnick, present.
Commissioner Tracy Gill?
Tracy Gill, present.
Commissioner John Jones?
John Jones, present.
Commissioner Alice Folk?
Alice Folk, present.
Commissioner Ruston Ray?
Ruston Ray, present.
And our new member tonight, Ms. Lauren Rose?
Lauren Rose, present.
Very good. So called orders taken care of. So we have the announcements for staff review and file for record.
Yes, staff, staff review. We had one staff review, CCA 24B, replat 1754 was filed. It was a staff review.
Thank you.
And that was Jason Lyon.
Jason Lyon, Planner 2.
Sorry about that. I guess so.
As far as general announcements, as you just spoke, we're welcoming our new planning commissioner, Lauren Rose. She will fit within the term for Hall Ramsey. We need an election of a new secretary. And Commissioners, if you'll please review the 2025 calendar for any omissions or errors. And that is all the announcements.
Very good. Welcome, Ms. Rose. Yeah, very welcome. You're very welcome. Well, that's before you. So the commission's schedule is. I know that's a little tentative with some folks I get coming on for the January time period. So I just submitted there for you. For review. Well, I guess we'll need a motion. Do we need a motion on formal for election of secretary? Is it required? I don't know. We need a motion to open up nominations for secretary.
Yes, sir.
So I need a motion to open up nominations for secretary?
I'll make a motion to open up nominations for secretary.
Very good. I need a second.
Second.
Very good. So we have open nominations for secretary. We have a nomination for the position. This would be for someone that currently doesn't hold the current position. So Tracy and I, yeah, and the treasurer, who's our treasurer? John, who's our treasurer? Or do we have one?
Well, it's secretary treasurer combined.
So secretary treasurer. So I hear nomination for secretary. Somebody wants to fill that role.
I would nominate Mary Winnick. Want to do it?
Second, if you'd like to do it.
Mary, you okay with that?
I guess I'm fine with that. But again, I'm up for submission. My term ends in January, so I do have to resubmit is my understanding.
Are you reapplying?
I am.
Okay.
But.
You can do it for a month.
I'll try it out for a month, right?
Yeah.
Let's see how you do.
Lord help me.
Any others? Motion to close nominations?
I move to close nominations.
You hear a second?
Second.
Very good. All four member, commission member, Ms. Mary Winnick, being secretary, all those say aye.
Aye.
Those post. No opposition. Mary, welcome being secretary.
Thank you.
Very good. Very good. So we got the next item is the approval of the October 24, 2024 minutes. It's because we didn't meet in November, if you guys remember. Hear motion for approval. There's any comments on those minutes? Motion approved?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from October 24, 2024.
Second.
Very good, very good. Hearing first and second, those that go for the approval of the minutes signify by saying yes.
Yes.
No motion carries. So we do have one public comment, but that comment is on an agenda item. I asked for clarification of the note. So we do not have any further comments on non-agenda items. We will open the public hearing. Our first item is old business for code amendment to the Drainage Ordinance 7139. Who's carrying the discussion?
I'll carry the discussion. Mr. Chair, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
If you recall, and this is Scott Grummer, Director of Planning and Permits. If you recall, we brought this through a couple of months ago, and then it was tabled to further engagement with developers, which we met with. And then we did not meet in the month of November. So here we are with it back, I'm sorry, month of October, back on the agenda. Or did we, we didn't meet last month? That's right. November. So this is an amendment to the stormwater ordinance. Just for those that are in attendance, we've been trying to improve our stormwater ordinance to accommodate 100-year storm events, which tend to flow through property, through people's yards, and to try to prevent damage as we move forward with subdivision development. So with that, we made modifications to the proposed ordinance based on feedback from developers and others, as well as commissioners. And we included with those changes clarification on what's considered the storm flow rather than a flood, floodway. We took that out and we called it a flow area or a storm, 100-year storm flow easement. And then in addition to that, we included, which it still states on there to be added to a plat. The, under that section seven states, the easement shall clearly identify the area as 100-year storm flow area. The plat shall have a note that reads as follows. No structures, fill, or obstruction shall be placed in the 100-year storm flow area. No reshaping of the surface within the 100-year storm flow area shall be made without the approval of the city engineer. And no fences shall be in the storm flow area. And I will mention, I did get some feedback from on this one as far as structures and and the last sentence only states no fences and doesn't mention structures. But we kind of mentioned the structures in the beginning of that comment where it says no structures, fill, or obstruction shall be placed. We wanted to designate between structures and fences and single out fences because that tends to be one of the primary things that gets in the way of those areas. But it still includes in the comments that structures such as storage buildings and the such should not be placed in it as well. And then if you go down through section 70-139, E1 through 4, we added the area and in a minimum of 12 inches above the finished elevation grade for lots adjacent to 100-year storm flow area. The standard is six inches. So in those areas where properties may be adjacent to storm flow, which may leave the street and go through a side yard or come through a side yard, we want those houses to have proper elevation to prevent any inundation of that event. And then under number four, all lots shall be provided with adequate drainage and shall be graded to drain surface water away from the foundation walls and towards a drainage facility or easement. We added that in because if you look at the development history of the city of Maumell, there's a lot of properties that were developed where we get a lot of side flow that just adds on to one another. And it creates issues with properties at the bottom of a hill. So our development pattern now is we're trying to get every house to take the water to the street or drainage easement when it, when it's finished graded and prevent that. This just facilitates what we're already trying to do in the, in the department. And then last, under number four, swells and lot drains should be used to direct storm water towards drainage facilities or easements and be designed to prevent drainage to adjacent properties when possible. Generally, drainage areas greater than one acre flowing on to or away from individual lots shall be intercepted in drainage ways, located in drainage easements, and routed into the subdivision storm drainage system. Again, trying to always, as a good practice, grade properties to direct the storm water to an easement of such. One of the concerns that came out of the developers that when we discussed this was the definition of what constitutes a, the 100-year storm flow area and where is it? Of course, we added language in there that designates that. And it's in the center of that number seven under 70-139. And it's in there, I know. I just, I'm not looking at it directly. But it does, there's wording to make sure that anything that's not contained in the underground system that tends to overflow should be contained in an easement. And that staff recommends, this is a recommendation to City Council for approval whenever you make your motion. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Director Grummer. Excuse me. A couple of, I have just a couple of minor things after I read back through it. And I can pass these along to Jason. I don't think it changes anything. Well, one may be of merit for further discussion. So I think we're one, two, three, four. Fifth sentence, fifth, fifth line down. This is based on 100-year storm at a 24-hour intensity duration. Add the word duration between intensity and frequency to match the same nomenclature that's stated above. And then on, I guess, the second page of the amendment, it has 100-year storm event shall be prepared by register. That should be licensed. We're licensed. We're licensed. Professional engineering should be in the state of Arkansas. If you're practicing engineering, you should be licensed in the state to practice. So I'd like to request those be included. And again, I'll pass this to Jason. And then on item three below, I would like to make a change here. It says instead of saying floors, it says add in, it says a minimum of 12 inches above finished elevation grade for lots adjacent to 100-year storm flow area or those of one foot above the base flood elevation, whichever is higher. I don't know if that situation would come up as we move forward with this. But if, if the base flood elevation, if you're in a flood, floodplain, you're doing development, the floodplain will want the govern, the base flood elevation will govern over the 100-year flood or the 100-year flow easement is what I'm trying to accomplish there. Which is by code is correct, but I, I think that we need to make that clear. So if, if the calculation ends up being on the 100-year storm flow area, it actually is higher than the BFE, then I think that you desire that to govern. If I understand the ordinance slightly.
Yes, sir.
And I'll pass this to Jason as well. Those are my comments.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize, I wasn't at subcommittee. I would ask this, sir. If a residential lot has a storm easement, we'll say coming between two houses from the street to the rear and then turning one way or the other at the back of the property. Typically, that's what I would envision. My sense is that because we're essentially prohibiting somebody from putting a fence on that, that people will simply fence their yard short. So they won't fence in their whole property by the ordinance. They wouldn't be able to. And some owners will not then maintain that area. So I guess my question is, maybe for Scott more, how does the city enforce, what I'm going to say, the maintenance of that if it were to become overgrown and essentially start blocking up the easement?
So we hold the residents accountable for maintaining any easement or right-of-way that is grassed in some form or landscape. No different than street right-of-way goes beyond the curb and residents are still responsible for cutting that grass. So it would be the same way on the easement. Even if the fences are off the property line and there's a gap between two fences, then the property owners would be responsible for that area.
Okay, good. That's all I have.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
On, we talk about, we use the word storm or storm event. So in section one, along with section seven, when we reference, you know, the 100-year storm, should we say be consistent in the language and add the word event? Or again, with?
If you want to.
How we are, we all know what that is. And we don't have to or, or remove the event where it is listed. It's only listed one time as a storm event.
You can be consistent, say it's a storm.
So just make it consistent. My other comment, which is right under where you talked about prepared by a licensed professional engineer and submitted to city, to the city engineer for review and approval. The next sentence, it says computation shall be made using usual and accepted methods. Would it be better to say that those are there to be aligned with usual and accepted methods? Or again, it's just wordsmithing this, you know, to, to make it more sense? I guess for me to read it that. And then those principles, when I was looking at the table in that section, tables one and two, are those current, Scott, those are reviewed periodically? It's under section two and section six. There's a reference to tables one and two. So my question was, who reviews those? Or again, they don't change over time?
Speaking of in the ordinance over?
Yeah.
I would have to look at it. Typically, the city engineer would be the one who would review anything drainage calculation wise.
So my thought would be it might be helpful to know or put in there when that last review occurred? Or since we're reviewing it now, is that a notation that should be on that? That those tables are reviewed every two years, every three years? Or just periodically? It's in the section 7139, under section two.
Okay, so we're talking about in the code?
Yes, sir.
You, it's talking about the runoff coefficient frequencies?
Yeah, it's for, you know, the analysis of that. Just was curious when I was looking at that.
And you're wondering if those are up to date?
I guess. Or do they never update? You know?
Well, Craig would probably be the better one to know as far as. I would say those are probably static numbers. They haven't changed since the ordinance.
They stay static. Okay.
They could change. I mean, it's, you know, and some of them were even given in a range, of course. So, which is subject to the engineer of record and how he wants to approach it. But those rationale coefficients have been around a long, long time.
Okay, okay.
And they give a range and they're married to as well. So it's, it's a, it's a little subjective for the engineer of record and how he wants to approach it.
No, thank you. Thank you. Then my last question had to do, Jason, and maybe you'll find this too as well. In section five, it talks about no concrete asphalt or other materials shall be placed in the curb gutter to access a driveway. Going back to what Tracy was saying, over time, individual property owners may make alterations. And I know I've observed that being done. Do they need to get approval? Or again, that's just up to someone reporting it? Or again, how would the city know that that flow, the path on the street now has been altered by concrete? Somebody leveling differently to access driveway?
Well, we typically only find out when somebody complains or somebody approaches us with a concern. And of course, this ordinance will be, will not be retroactive to existing properties. It's going to be with new developments moving forward. Existing residential areas, subdivisions are not going to have these easements in place. So right now, we're just working off of what we know.
Okay, but that section I just mentioned is not new. So that's just trying to clarify who, who oversees. Like you were saying, we're making these changes. Will somebody periodically make observations? Or while our employees are out looking, they are, they're always looking, right? You're looking to see if there's any occurrence that's not within code. And I can live with that as the whole community can. But I guess we don't want to have a blind eye to it either. Just so that our individuals are always looking at that as the opportunities. Because I think even over time, where I live, I see the erosion. I see things changing. So, you know, the builder did their best to accommodate all this. But I think over time, it changes. I haven't touched anything, but you could see the erosion. So just putting that out there as to how do we maintain or sustain when we have these type of changes? I mean, it's, it's all well and good on initial plotting and plating and build. But in five, six years, will, will that change?
And we work well with residents who call in. That typically, again, if somebody does something like that and it creates a flooding issue for a property, one of those residents are going to call us.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll address to that point. But we do keep an eye out. So.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is currently right now, there's not a requirement. So if, if the owner wants to put in a fire bed or cobblestone it or whatever the case is, as long as the grade of that flow easement is not changed, are those types of activities permitted?
Not necessarily because structures are not allowed to be placed in a drainage easement currently. But people still do it. So where we find that, we will set it up as a code enforcement issue. But you're right. Yes, it could be done right now where fences are in areas. And those areas are the ones that we picked out that had, I think, six homes that were flooded back in March. And some of that was due to these fence structures that redirected the pathway of the water into a home. So in those situations, if they're existing, we're working with the residential owners to, and the city is assisting to move those fences out of the way so that we can open those pathways up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When you're talking about cobblestones, were you talking about just flat? Kind of that type of thing?
I guess I was, I was making reference to, right now, you say no structures. Do you not want any? And I, I think that it is restrictive enough. And I, you know, you need some latitude, I think.
Well, I was thinking, it's like, is there a, is there a potential? Let's say that somebody wants to make a cobblestone area in their yard, their backyard, where they can't put a fence. Kind of like a little grotto or something.
Sure.
Will they be allowed to? Or would they go to permits? And then you would determine it's not a structure or that type of thing? Is that the direction I think you were going?
Is any acti, is any improvement activity permitted within it?
Yeah.
And right now, it's just limited to structures and fences. So if, if other improvements are?
If I want to put some pavers down, I can.
I don't, the ordinance is not specific to that.
And that's not necessarily obstructive. You can still put pavers down and put it in a, make it a swell and help water travel along that pathway. What we look for is that anything being placed, it's obstructing that water flow.
And we could change, it's, where is that said in it? It says, it says no structures, fill, or obstructions shall be placed.
Okay. And I was thinking a planter box.
So then that's subject, you know, as cobblestone or whatever they are electing to do improvements to the property. Is that?
At the?
Okay, as long as it's not an obstruction, I think that's where the, where they would take issue with it.
And, and we typically interpret those on a as come, as needed basis. So when it comes up, I mean, at the end of the day, if somebody places something that is causing an impact to an adjacent property, then I think we have enough language in here in order to go and say something needs to be modified to prevent the damage.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Seeing no further questions, we have no public interest for comments this evening. Chair would entertain a motion to approve CAU 24-4.
I move a due pass recommendation to the City Council of code adjustment 24-4, code amendment to the Drainage Ordinance, section 70-139, contingent upon further engineer, staff, or commissioner comments.
Second.
Hearing first and second, commission will now act on the approval of CAU 24-4 on the code amendment to Drainage Ordinance 70-139.
Chair, could I clarify something real quick?
Sure.
Since our city attorney's not here. Commissioner Jones, is yours basically with the amendments that Chairman Johnson requested early on?
Yeah, he said with comments.
Okay.
And I'll pass those along to them as well, too. Now with that clarification, all those that are for this CAU 24-4 code amendment to Drainage Ordinance 70-139, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All post. No, seeing none. This will be due pass recommendation to the City Council. I'm going to get this to you, Jason, before I walk out the door with it. All right. We're on the new business. So one item tonight, S U B 21-8 for the PTI Plemmer Development Plan Amendment. This is the proposed amendment to the previously approved Plemmer Development Plan for PTI within the approved landscape plan. Regarding the public comment, I'll let staff introduce the item and then we'll let public comment come and discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason, if you'll pull up, I'd like to start with the previous. There you go. And I apologize, we did not include the originally approved landscape plan in the packet that was sent out to you. So we wanted to provide.
We saw it. It was at subcommittee, though.
Yes, sir. So in front of you on the screen, Jason's showing you what the original landscape plan that was approved for this subdivision when they came back, or back in 2021. When they came back in September of 2023, requesting a revision to phase this project so that PTI could build their building on the eastern side and then leave the remaining storefronts, per se, to be built as a second phase. The landscape plan was not modified or requested modification. It was just a request for a phasing plan on this. Staff comments at the time in September of 2023 was that we wanted the landscaping for the entire development, including phase one and phase two to be done along with the construction of the phase one, primarily because if you'll notice on that western side, there was evergreen plantings that was meant to be a screen from the commercial use in the future. And as Jason's showing you, that area on the western was indicated on that phasing plan as heavily planted evergreens. And the intent of staff at the time was that it would be better now with the building further away from the residential and not being utilized as a drive-through to have those evergreens planted now so that it would have time to grow and that, that natural screen would come in and provide a better screening for the residential later on down the line. Another reason for the approval of the landscape plan this way back in 2021 was because the original design had a drive-through window on that side. So it was important to have a screening to prevent noise, create a noise barrier. So in the process, after the, the phasing change, they came through and there was commentary back and forth between us, PTI, and the builder at the time, this earlier this year. And somewhere along the way, as things got approved. And somewhere along the way, as things got approved, the landscape plan that was submitted was what is being shown right now, was just for phase one and did not include the phase two. On the back end, as they were working towards the certificate of occupancy, we caught that and we brought it to their attention. And they indicated that they were not aware of the additional requirements and would impact them economically because their construction loan did not include those items to be placed. So they've come forth asking for an amendment to the landscape plan in order to allow for the existing, existing understory trees and the, and the significant trees to remain and not to disturb that, to provide an existing screening for the residents. And at subcommittee, we discussed that we would go out with the, with the owners, have conversation as to options. Between now and then, we came up with the option of where the owners could potentially just fill in the gaps that are existing right now with, with evergreens or to provide some improvement to the existing that is there and move forward with it. But I did want to, I went out to and took some additional pictures. Jason, if you can pull those up, just to kind of show you what's there. Because I want to make sure everybody, as well as the owners of P T I, are aware of what, based on what this plan shows, the, the evergreen area is approximately thirty feet from the edge of the future proposed sidewalk to the back of the fences. And, and real quick, before you show these, if you can go back to that, that plan, Jason. One of the comments, we had some, we had a resident that called, who I believe is going to speak tonight on behalf of the owners. Actually, go back to that, the original, there you go. And one of their concerns, which wasn't on the table to discuss tonight, was the sidewalk that was approved back in twenty twenty one. That sidewalk, as you show on the northern, northwest corner, makes a ninety degree jag and it runs and then runs down. And that is meant to connect to a sidewalk that was built to the property line that runs behind those houses and actually connects into a trail to the street on Calais. So we were trying to make sure that there is connectivity for the residents that live in the neighborhood as well as to get in. And one of the concerns, they didn't want a sidewalk running behind their houses at all. But worst case, they would be okay with the sidewalk, with the plantings being between the sidewalk and the houses. So it is shown that is how it was planned, was to have that screening to screen the, the existing residents from that sidewalk pathway. So going to, if you'll look, let's see. Can you go to the PowerPoint, Jason? Okay. So what I'm showing you here is an aerial photo. You've got Country Club Parkway on the very southern part and then the entrance into P T I. So I'm going to go from the southern going north. That large circle that you see on the screen is a, is a very large oak that is inside. And I drew kind of a red line that shows that thirty foot area of green. That tree is inside that area and it would likely be, not have to be impacted by anything, could stay. Where I've got that little circle is actually an orange flag that I placed out there just for the owners so that they can see where that, where I'm talking about, where that thirty foot line is. So we have a gap there from that large circle going south that we were talking about, where they could add two or three trees. But technically, the original plan had evergreens and I believe they had some hollies that were, that were specked on the original plan. So, you know, that's, if you postpone the improvement to phase two landscaping, then, you know, that's, that's one thing that you're going to discuss tonight, or whether or not if that needs to be filled in. Now go back, go to the, the next slide. So going further up, where I've got a large X, you can kind of see on the pictures to the right, there are some, some nicer saplings that are in there. But the little circle is where I put a flag. The majority of those trees that are in that area would actually fall within the paved area on the phase two and the sidewalk. So in the future, they would have to be cut down and would be taken away when the landscape plan would come in for phase two. So again, for the short term, it does provide some screening during the spring and the summer, during the winter. Of course, you can see, you can see through it. So that's a challenge right there. And then when you move to the next one, go to the one after that. Yep, right there. So that's closer to the, to the northwest corner of the property. I've got an X by what is kind of a nice red maple. But that red maple falls outside. That's where future pavement would be on the phase two. And then the little circles where I put an orange flag to indicate the thirty foot from the fence line. So when looking at this area, the majority of the, of the trees that are in there that are creating existing screening would eventually have to go away. And the intent of the staff at the time was that it's better to have this as part of the construction and put the screening in now so it has time to grow. Now with that being said, I'm going to state that I find fault within our department because we did have some processes that were not clean when it came to the communication of these requirements between the point of the planning commission approval, point of the site plan to the building permits. We did have communications. I did send an email requesting a meeting with the owners at the time, which was back in March of this year. We met with the owner and the builder along with my staff. And although I do not have a record of it, I know that we did discuss it. But I have no record of that discussion as far as the landscape. In addition to that, when the builder put in his permit, only the builder was on that permit. So he received the communications from our systems when we were communicating, not Holloway Engineering. Holloway Engineering is the one that did the landscape plan. So if they didn't convey that requirement to the builder, to the owner, it wasn't clean, then Holloway couldn't have stepped up because they weren't being communicated while we were going through the building permit process. So I've, I've recognized this as a hole in our communication process and we're going to clean that up in the future. But as far as this is concerned, we, we did find communications in our system where we did openly express to the builder that this was a requirement, but it never got conveyed into the civil plans and didn't move through the process for construction, so.
I've got a question, Mr. Grummer. And I apologize because I wasn't at subcommittee. Just to kind of help me better understand, was phase one and phase two, was, was the landscape for both phases to be done at the initial onset? Was that?
That's correct. At the September twenty twenty three meeting, the intent was for them to build the structure on phase one and staff had a staff comment to where the landscape for both phase one and phase two would be done, which is the entire property.
Was that communicated so everybody knew that going into it?
During the meeting, the planning commission meeting, yes. And the applicant at the time was Holloway Engineering, who was doing the, the, who also did the civils. So they were made aware of that at the time. And we did have it in our staff comments, so it was communicated at that time.
I think one thing of importance is, is that when the, the builder came and submitted his plan, he submitted this plan for approval. And it was approved.
And it was this, the.
The one we're looking at tonight?
Yes, ma'am. And I'm, I'm asking that question in subcommittee.
And staff is fine with leaving it the way and just adding a few trees. It would, that would not be that costly. But that's going to be a short term fix because when phase two comes in, based on, unless at that time, which I believe is what the, the owners are asking, is that we deal with the landscape on that side at the time whenever this ever gets built out in the future. It may not ever get built out. Then that remains the way it is, unless the owners change it and decide to.
So basically, we approved two different plans?
No, planning commission approved one plan. Staff approved another. Was there any concession between the owner, when we left for subcommittee, any further discussion regarding concession from his proposed plan that was approved based upon where we were at with commission approval?
To my knowledge, I think that they were okay with putting a few extra trees to fill some of those gaps. But I believe they're here and they can speak.
Nothing has been formalized?
That's the only thing that we formalized, is adding some additional trees. And that was in our staff comments, which we.
What, what are those trees?
Just, we didn't, we weren't specific. We were just looking at, you've got existing, existing oaks and other things. So technically, it really wouldn't look good if you just threw some hollies in there in the midst of that and you got, because that whole area to be properly planted is going to have to be grubbed out and ingrated and redone because it's, it's overgrown, there's drainage back there. Some of the existing residents have made some modifications behind their fences that are on this property that's causing some of that water to back up a little bit. And that's, that would be part of, you know, a site plan for the phase two.
Let's hear from our, our, our public comment card, Mr. Engberg. Welcome to the commission meeting. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
You can move that box out of the way if it's, you can just push it if you want.
We might need to put the box underneath the podium for you.
My name is Bill Engberg. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Can you state your address, please, sir?
Yes, I have standing as owner of one oh four Calais Drive. I'm probably immediately behind the plan development. I've been asked by some of the owners along Calais, I've been doing coordination with them. One oh two Calais, Gary and Paula Garrett couldn't be here tonight, but they've asked me to speak for them as well as one oh six and one oh eight. They might have some more ideas or thoughts, but I'm just kind of speaking in general for them as we're all in agreement. I'm pro-development. I own a strip mall, just like this one that's here. So I'm really hoping that our goal is a win for everybody. We want the residential owners to get their needs and concerns addressed. We want the developers to be successful and we want the city to make more taxes, to keep my taxes lower. So we think there's a happy triple point where everyone's needs are met. We'd like to continue building on this really successful relationship we have as far as the coordination that the Calais neighbors, and there might be some other Calais residents here as well. But I don't speak for everyone, just this group of people immediately behind that property. But we've worked with the general contractor, Alan Schrader, and have had a fantastic relationship. We've brought concerns up to him directly. And every one of those concerns have been addressed and they've even amended through their engineer everything that we've asked for. And so what we're hoping to do is just to prevent an agreement that's verbal to get, you know, lost over time and over conversations so that everything gets basically put into writing. When we first bought the property over twenty years ago, that was supposed to be a children's park. And when we, when we walked the property, we were invited up to the developer's building and they had this giant model of the neighborhood. And, and the real estate agent was like, yep, just go up there, take a look at the park that's going to be there. And we're like, great, we're buying a property right next to a park. What could possibly go wrong? And then very quickly, it changed into something then something else. And so by getting something in front of the council and getting it, our concerns on paper, we were hoping to make sure that there's not more scope creep as far as what ends up happening. Again, Alan Schrader's been great as far as communication. And our concern tonight is, it was focused on lighting, sidewalk, vegetation, the plan. But he's already, he's already addressed the issues with lighting. We were asking for I D A compliant, fully shielded, full cutoff lighting. And he did everything we wanted. So I think the legal term is light trespass. We didn't want wiggly field coming into our bedroom windows at night. And so, perfect. He had everything amended, you know, that same week, engineer created it. And we're just hoping now for our, our final two concerns are this green wall that we're hoping to have codified so that when we're sitting in our home, we are not looking at a giant commercial backside of a building. And there's no backside of any commercial building that will ever look good to a homeowner. And so we don't want to stop development. We just want that green wall so that we are not looking at a single foot of roof line along that entire strip. And most of the vegetation that's there, again, the money concerns, these large trees, if they're left to grow, then that's one less tree they need to plant. And it's naturally already there and happy. And so we were hoping that the builder can save money, the big trees that are there will be left. If evergreens and hollies are planted and doing some junior high geometry, if they're planted at a, a minimum of ten, eight to ten foot right off the bat, then over the course of the next couple of years, they'll hit the magic sixteen foot mark. And the end goal, and I believe that's a sixteen foot roof line currently on the building that's there right now. And if that sixteen foot roof line is moved to sixty eight feet and eleven and three quarter inches from our property line, then we're going to need, when phase two is completed, a sixteen foot tree that's been given time to grow. And with the right evergreens, the right holly, we can either, we're asking the council to approve their request with the condition that either shorter trees, eight to ten foot, are planted immediately in like a double row staggered so that we won't see anything in the future. If the builder wants to put off planting any larger trees later, then we would ask that on the day that there is a sixteen foot or whatever roof line height in the future, that on that same day, there is an equally or commensurate height tree, which is going to be far more expensive, like exponentially higher and more expensive to have a taller tree put in in the future. So I believe that if we have a double row of evergreen and holly staggered, shorter, eight to ten foot, so it's an unbroken green line that uses a combination of the large pear, peach, and, and oak trees that are there, and just add to where there are gaps or where it's missing, everybody wins. And it costs them less on the front end, since it was already agreed to that there should have been that vegetation from day one, or at least the completion of phase one. The other thing that we're asking is, as far as the sidewalk that's there, that sidewalk extends to thirty seven feet, five inches. That is going to wipe out a thirty foot, a group of thirty foot trees that are approximately thirty feet wide. Without that sidewalk, those large trees, and I believe I sent Mr. Grumer a number of photos and he highlighted some of them. Without that sidewalk, those trees would remain and it just saved the builder a lot of money. And the thirty foot trees that are thirty feet wide as well are already in place. The concern is not a single owner wants a sidewalk going north to south as it's depicted there. Our first option is no sidewalk whatsoever and just let the other sidewalk that's about twenty years old just terminate. The next option is to have that sidewalk where it's terminating head straight east and connect to, I believe that's what the country, the, the parkway up to the, the golf course. I can't, don't remember the name. I believe that's what the country, the, uh, the parkway up to the, the golf course. I can't, don't remember the name, but you get the idea. Basically, have it go straight east so that we don't have foot traffic behind the commercial property, and foot traffic behind our homes as well. So, if there has to be a sidewalk, send it straight east. And then, lastly, if there's absolutely no choice, then at least have that sidewalk moved over a couple of feet, uh, to protect the thirty-foot trees that are there providing cover right now. And speaking with Alan Schrader, the builders don't want to build a sidewalk, and none of the owners want it there either. So, the only group that possibly wants the sidewalk that are stakeholders are, are the city itself. And so, uh, second, uh, i- in relation to the, the double staggered row of evergreens, if there could be a single irrigation line that goes along that, just to give them water so that they actually grow, and then, if any of them go brown due to a ba- like the bagworm, or if something dies, to have, uh, uh, the possibility of, there's a ninety-day, you know, ninety days after that tree has gone brown, dead, and gone, that it would be replaced, so that it's not, you know, plant something, it's dead, and we gotta row it, uh, dead trees and no coverage as a possibility. And then, and then, finally to that, if there'd be possibility of a waiver for the height of the fences for the properties on Calais immediately adjacent, that we'd be given permission to build our fences higher if needed. But, I, I don't think that, that would be requ- that would be needed, because originally, there was supposed to be a six-foot privacy fence in that plan right there, uh, that was built by the builder. Well, we don't need a fence, and they can save all that money from the fencing company and put it towards the trees. And so, that would save them money and give us that green wall that we're requesting. I've provided some photos to, uh, Mr. Groomer, and, uh, that's all I had as far as our concerns. I hope I didn't speak out of turn. But, if there are any questions that you have for me, I am happy to answer them now or do something to help coordinate with the builders in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Sir.
Chairman, I have one question to the gentleman. You're, I'm looking at the screen that you're seeing here, and, haha, with my bifocals, just to be clear, I'm seeing the sidewalk away from the fences over by the driveway.
That is correct, and I've got a, I've got a blow-up of, of that, showing specifically what you're talking about.
So, that's kinda on the far side of that green space, the green space being between the driveway and the fence.
That, yes, the, the sidewalk would be to the eastern side of that green zone, but on the blow-up, uh, that sidewalk goes from thirty-seven feet and inward, not at thirty-seven feet it begins. And with my bifocals, the, I'm happy to, I, we had to blow it up to see that as well, but this was provided to us by the city.
Right on the, on the photos that you had with the circles, you were showing a thirty-foot mark, and that big tree that you were describing was inside, looked like in the middle of the thirty feet. So, the outer edge of that thirty feet is still seven feet in from the curb that you're talking about.
That's correct, because, uh, you've got a forty-foot building line that shows on here. You've got roughly four to five feet from the building line to the outer edge of that sidewalk, and then a five-foot sidewalk, so you've got about nine feet, nine to ten feet between the building line and where that green space would start, which would leave you thirty feet to the, um, to the fences, which is how I calculated it.
And, and as you go north, this is a proposed sidewalk, but as you hit the property line, does that sidewalk exist going north?
It does exist, uh, and it goes up against the, uh, it is overgrown, it's not used because it, it's dead-ended. So, it would still need to be further cleaned up into the future, but, uh, as part of our, uh, master, uh, uh, transportation plan, trying to create walkability and, uh, alternative routes, um, that, that was a connection that was built, and we're just trying to make the connection to the, where it was meant to go.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And, uh, I have one question for Mr. Groomer. Uh, sir, when you say a, a forty-foot building line, you're referring to the, a building line as far as where the road starts, not where the building of the actual commercial building is, correct?
That's correct, so there's a building line that prevents, uh, any structure from being built, uh, next to your property line, so, uh, if you can, if you, can you pan into that a little bit, Jason? So, you'll see where it says forty-foot building line-
Yep, okay.
-and buffer, so that's where no building can encroach beyond that line. Uh, of course, they don't show it. The building actually is diagrammed here as further away. You're, it's probably, what, seventy feet or so away from the property line?
Yep, sixty-nine feet.
Sixty, okay, alright.
Well, the, what's, what's before us tonight is a modification of the landscape plan, so fence, um, just a matter of, of logistical, the fence and the sidewalk, and those are part of the site plan, and that's not what's before us, but your comments are well received. So, tonight, what we would, what is on the table is the revised approved landscape plan. I'm not sure exactly what to call it. Oh, but that's a departure of, uh, of the direction that was approved by the commission, so, um, hearing these public comments, our owner, our representative, he stepped, oh, he's at the back, okay, very good, or who's our representative owner? So, i- is there any, um, basically, hearing this public comment, is, is there any thing that you would like to concede, consent?
Oh, it's your personal, take it right there.
Very good.
Well, Roy Andrews, Holloway Engineering.
I don't know.
Um, just to clarify, I mean, the sidewalk's not on the table tonight. The sidewalk would be dealt with when we come back for Phase Two with the development plan and everything.
That's correct.
And, and we can adjust, deal with that at that time. Um, I, otherwise, then just yield to, um, what the owner's willing to do. Uh, I do worry about irrigation being in that area, because any irrigation we would put in right now would destroy the root system. And I think planting right now at the dormant time of the year, whether, whether that's evergreens or whatever, I, I do think there's a good chance that everything will survive and have a survivability. So, I don't, I don't see irrigation being an issue today, but, um, yes, I'd like the owners to come up and talk about that, and, and I'm sure we can get to an agreement.
What was the, if you go back to the original, uh, landscape plan, I saw this densely, it, what, what did they propose initially? What, what they had in there, Jason?
This is the original landscape plan. Let's see, it looks like, uh, I'm guessing red maple. Those are foster hollies that are planted in the straight rows, and then what are the intermittent trees?
Yeah, it looks like red maples. Obviously, the maples are fast-growing. Um, the, um, oh, the giant, green giant arborvitus would be a quick-growing, um, evergreen that would fill that space in, that get quite large, that would meet the height requirement that was being asked for.
And, um, and just in case, if, uh, I would rather see a landscape plan put in front of you that is approved for this, and if it's not what they presented, if it's anything different from that, um, just for, since we're talking about if we're adding things in, if it's a significant change from what's on here, I might suggest that we maybe defer one more month to add, to, to work out the details of what that is, unless you want to, um, uh, verbalize it here and we can bet, and we can understand it.
I mean, we can certainly do that. I, I, I think the bigger question is that the owner wishes to take occupancy next week. And, and so, there, there's a push to get that going, to get into their new facility.
And I, and I have, uh, getting them occupancy is not an issue. We've, uh, we've already agreed to allow them to do a cer- we're doing a temporary certificate of occupancy, and we can defer the landscaping, um, uh, as necessary to, to take care of this and do it right, but...
So, we, we've got, I think what I heard from the, uh, the public representation that's here tonight, he, he actually wants something different than what's proposed, uh, a slot modification perhaps. Um, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not the landscape person. So, but if we, do we, do you wanna approve this? I, I've not heard from the owner, so, uh, I don't know what concession he's willing to make, or, or do you wanna go, do, or do you want some time to come back with a new plan? Where, where are you? I, I, I know you want to occupy, it seems like we can get you past that.
Yeah, we have temporary occupancy. We're okay there. My name's Brad Sanders. I'm one of the owners of PTI. Just wanna start off saying that we didn't know about this. There was, break it down as a communication. If we knew, we would've taken all the proper channels, avoided what we're in right now. And what I'm kinda asking for now is a little bit of common sense, that we don't know what's gonna go over on that other side. What you're looking at here is what we approved and what we planned. I know the previous owners, like you said, it's planned to be five different things. Those things have changed. We don't know for certain what's gonna happen over there. We don't know if this landscape that you approved is gonna fit the needs of that next building that comes over there. I don't want to put it in our time, money, tear it down, it not live. We had to pack three and a half foot of shell across the whole property. We don't know where that line's gonna come down and meet the landscaping. The feasibility of this surviving isn't there. Feasibility of the sidewalk being built, we thought was twenty years ago, we don't know if it's there, that, that there's gonna be a sidewalk or not. I think it's a lot of unknowns, and to us, that's how the property has been untouched. It's been untouched, it has not been changed. I'm willing to make some concessions. I understand everything that he is, the owners have said. If that property is developed, we would do everything we need to do. But I think right now, we don't know. I don't think y'all know, I don't think we know.
Well, I, I agree with that, and I, and I'm sorry that you're in the position you are, truly. Uh, we're just trying to find a medium around here so we can move forward. The, uh, issue, I think, from the commission's standpoint initially is, is that, um, there was an anticipation of screening to be provided, even at the phase level.
Gotcha.
So, that, I think that that was clear from the commission. I don't know that, uh, we would change that based upon, uh, a public, public comment. I do think that there is probably some latitude regarding, um, what would be pr- proposed now at this point in time, the way that you faced it. So, um, you can pull it down, or we can make some, we, we can make it to some determination, or you can meet with the prop, your, your neighbors, that are, that are gonna be there and come to something that would, would work between the two of you.
I think before we do anything there, we need more call, uh, clarity on the sidewalk, the feasibility of the sidewalk, and if it's gonna be there or not.
Well, that's a site plan issue, and that's not before us.
Yeah, so...
And it's just, you know, if you wanna bring back up the site plan, that's fine, too.
I hate to make any decisions if I don't know the facts.
You can, you can pull it down, we give you a temporary, well, Scott's department would propose a temporary cert- within certain...
So, when, when would we know, and how would we know that that sidewalk is gonna happen or it's not gonna happen?
You'd have to bring it back before the commission for approval.
Okay. Is there a way to, well, this whole thing shouldn't have been approved as one thing, it should've been two separate projects.
Well, and, and I'll clarify, when you, uh, when this came forward last year in the fall for the zoning, I believe at the time, there was pressure, y'all were trying to close on a deal and try to move in with the building. It already had an existing approval of a PRD development plan, and y'all, and it was agreed, and, and no modifications from that plan were gonna be made at that time. Hindsight, you should've changed the development plan-
Correct.
-and done, and done it then, not on the back end, so that's not the city's, you know, again, I wanna make sure in clarification, and, and there was, there was a, uh, a push on, if, to our department to move things as best we can so that you could get into a building, because you were needing to, to expand.
Yes.
And we worked with you to make that happen.
Yes.
And unfortunately, because of that working, we're now in this position because of failure of communications, even though we communicated, but we didn't do it in a very good, well, way. So, that's why I'm saying, I think this is, I, I recognize the impact of you as an owner trying to change things, and I don't want to, uh, I don't want to negatively impact, uh, the owner and the development that my staff, uh, and myself, uh, created. But with that being said, uh, we're getting you in the building, and if we need a little bit of time to make sure that we do this right on the landscaping, because as I pointed out in the pictures, if the site plan is not changed right now, what you see on the development plan, that is approved, and that's what's gonna be built, and nothing's gonna be built unless you bring back a new site plan and development plan to change that. If you wish to do that, then you can do that, and we can take it through Planning Commission and make that modification. Otherwise, um, uh, any decisions today on this landscape plan needs to take into account the existing site plan that is approved, which includes the, the, the sidewalk needs to stay. I would not modify anything with that unless that you bring back-
It's not before us, we can't. What's before us is a, is a modification of the landscape plan.
And if, if, if the current site plan stays, then I just wanted to make everyone aware that a lot of those trees and structures that are in there would have to go in, in the future.
Yes, I thought your presentation made that clear.
We, we are willing to make concessions. I mean, we will put what needs to be over there. I'm just appealing to the feasibility of, um, it getting damaged later during construction.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I, I mean, you're the owner, you can do what you like, but, um, you know, you got, you gotta, the staff has indicated that you get the temporary certificate of occupancy, you can move forward. Uh, that will have a condition on the landscape plan. Uh, it has to, to some extent. Uh, I think you can understand that, whatever timeframe staff wants to put on that, and then you bring back, uh, a plan that your neighbors, hopefully you can come to an agreement between the two that, that, that would work and, and address their concerns. As far as the sidewalk goes and, and those types of things, uh, you, you know, you said it yourself, "Oh, I don't know what's gonna be there." Until you know, I, I wouldn't bring it back, so I, I would leave the landscape concession, uh, to a, a discernment between you and your neighbors and get them as happy as you can.
Another thing that, um, look for some clarification on, the building behind us, the school, they have the exis- same existing natural vegetation that we have as a barrier, and theirs was approved, and there's no difference.
If you want to come back before us with that, you have, you, you have that right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to navigate it and, and understand it.
Chairman, um, everyone here, again, I know we're looking at past review. I'm looking at all of this today, and just for record-keeping, and so, things are communicated and logged correctly and recorded, now that I have that new role as secretary. I look at, it was in, initially Fountain Blue Center, the project plan, and I'm trying to make, remember some of this, and then now we have PTI. This landscape plan says Athletic Club Edition.
This is the plan that was-
Alright, so, how do we make any change that it's, it's not called Fountain Blue Center, or will it be called Fountain Blue Center with PTI there?
Well, these are just like placeholder names. They came in as Fountain Blue Center, it wasn't changed. The lot has not changed, it's still lot to our, our athletic subdivision. There was no replats done, it was all as one. They just, and what they came to last year was actually a second extension request, and the, and a, and a minor modification to the development plan, which was to fa- to allow it to be phased.
I'm just trying to connect the dots easily. I don't know that I can sometimes, okay?
Where we were with it, we bought it, it had, the property from the existing owner had this approved.
And I remember that, so, just from-
We wanted to get it, they said, from, again, understanding, as long as we don't go outside the blueprints of what's approved, we can get going on it.
That's correct.
So, we said, "Hey, let's just keep it in that, but we're only doing this," and we weren't worried about anything over there until two weeks ago.
I'm just, but, you know, again, from a titling and making sure, a year from now, or something happens, we're all, this is all-
Right.
-understanding how this flowed into being PTI.
So, going back to twenty-twenty-one, when this, uh, this development plan was approved, it was approved as a strip mall, um, and to be one development. And then, in twenty-twenty-two, they came and asked for an extension, because at that point, the person who came forward with the development plan backed out, decided not to purchase the property, and the property owner wanted to continue to market it as being already approved with the entitlement, so that they could move forward with the development. And then, twenty-twenty-three came along, PTI came in, saw this, and saw, "Well, we need to expand. We could still work within this footprint," so the plan was, they just wanted to build their PTI building as part of the larger structure on the eastern side, with the anticipation of building, uh, the remaining, uh, strip center units as a second phase as, uh, the market would bear. Now, they always have the right to come back and take that away, make it a separate structure, all those, but they have to bring that forward as a new site plan, development plan for approval. approval. So until the development plan is approved, we have to go off the original, we can't change from that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Well, first thing, thank you for coming to Malmell, and I think your service is going to be great for us. I think at this time, probably it'd be in order to table this until the January 23rd, 2025 meeting. I would like to make that motion to table this.
I will second that motion.
Thank you.
Does he, is, it doesn't, well, before we do that, is there any, do you, is that, does the owner want us to take action tonight?
So your vote would be, don't do it, or do it as?
We would, no, we would just, we would, we would table this for, for the, I'm not for sure if we did, if we table it, the same things before Scott, if I recall, so.
Intercedent, do it as.
It would be, you would defer, you would defer it. You would, you would, you would defer it. A deferment requires the owner to be, to defer it, not the, the action the commission requires to defer.
I just understand options tonight would be to vote, build landscape as is on that plan, or not.
So, so the action tonight, mind if I clarify, Mr. Chair?
Sure, that's fine, go ahead.
So, so the action tonight, you put forward an amendment to the landscape plan, so that amendment was placed in the packet, and Jason, if you want to pull, if you can pull that, that landscape plan up so we can just refresh everyone.
Because our amendment was to build to the plan that we have.
There you go, right.
I understand.
So this is the, this is the plan that was approved in the building, with the building permit, or it, it, it found its way through the building permit process with all the other civil documents and elevations and everything else. So you would be acting on this to approve the amendment. If that fails, then they can come back with a new amendment if they want, so you can act on this. They can either, it can either pass or fail, and if it fails, you'll, you'll be coming back anyway, but then you would have to, I believe, go back through the notification process that was done before, and we would, trying to minimize the amount of cost and what you have to do in order to come back. If, if we have, since we now have the residents who reached out to me this week, we have the opportunity of sitting down with everybody and just coming up, if there's even a slight modification to this, to add, where we're talking about any hollies or trees, or, you know, and come up with a modification to the existing that you've got, then it may help the commission in making a decision. And in that, if you decide to come back at some future time to change the site plan, development plan, and it preserved this space, then that gives you time to, to work all those details out into the future.
Oh, while you occupy.
Right.
Go over it, which I think is your main objective.
So right now, the commission would be acting on a motion to approve the proposed landscape plan with any amendments or modifications?
You know, it, to me, if you, if you were wanting to do sidewalks and this and change the plan up, if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, then this interim time of the temporary occupancy permit allows you to do that and come back.
I think we need more actions that are available on the table.
I don't understand.
We would like to defer.
Okay.
There's a chance to work it out and get this resolved.
Yeah, I do, and just because it sounds like your client's wanting to entertain some other things, Roy. It does to me, so, yeah, so we'll defer that.
Till next month.
Do you want a time period, you know? How much time are you going to give them on the temporary occupancy, Scott?
Well, so we're giving them a temporary occupancy until the, until the end of this year. At the first of the year, as far as all that's left is the landscape, so typically.
That's a week.
Well, right. Typically on landscaping, any landscaping that's left over, the ordinance requires a bond, a performance bond on the landscaping. They, they've met all the requirements for the building occupancy and for C of O, and we certainly don't want to prevent giving them that C of O, but I'd be more than happy to work with them if they want the C of O and do a bond, or if they want to continue the temp C of O through another month to, to get action on this, I have no problem.
We can defer again, too.
Yeah, we'll defer till next month.
Okay.
Can, can we get a specific date just for notification purposes?
Next regular scheduled planning commission, January 23rd.
Get that.
Well, the owner's deferred, we don't have to, I mean, he's pulled it, but he's pulled it down, so we don't, I don't think that we require action. We don't have our attorney here.
I do believe that takes, I thought it took a vote.
It, it does.
I thought it took a vote on, do y'all accept my defer?
I would, I would recommend, just because we did public notifications and mailouts, just so that the public is aware of that date. That date is going to be January 23rd at 6:30 PM, so.
The chair will enter a motion for defer until the next regular scheduled meeting, which is, it always wants a date, so you got it there, Scott, what day was it?
January 23rd, 2025.
January 23rd.
Same way.
Thank you.
Second.
January first and second, like on the deferment of S U B 21-8 for the permanent development plan amendment to be deferred for January 23rd, regular scheduled by Malmell Planning Commission meeting. All those for the deferment, say yes, yes?
Yes.
I was going to say no.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate your attendance. We'll close the public hearing. Next item on the agenda this evening is the City Council Liaison Reports, December 2, 2024, and we didn't have, I guess, a November meeting on here too, Jason?
No, it was, it was in the end of November.
Okay. December 2, 2024 is Commissioner Folt.
There really wasn't anything that affected us. They did just do a second reading on, at the improvement district, so I'm assuming in Mary's, they probably did that.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner went for December 16th.
Yes, so on third reading for ordinance 1139, which is for Stone Canyon, that was adopted six to two, and then the third reading for 1140, which is for Cypress Bend, that was adopted six to two.
Thank you, ma'am. Next month, City Council Liaison, January 6, 2025, is Commissioner Rose, and I have the January 21 meeting. Any other action before us tonight coming? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the City Planning Commission meeting of December 19th.
Your second, January first and second, motion is to adjourn the meeting, all those say yes?
Yes.
No, motion carries, we are adjourned.